I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, August 18th, back to order. And our first item of the afternoon is Item 11A, which is a public hearing and order on 1508-1814 in the matter of authorizing the transfer of surplus county-owned real property identified as assessors map number 1704-2811, tax lot 03000, to the City of Eugene for public purposes. And it's located at Beltline Road and Elizabeth Street. And I'll turn this over to Jeff Turk, our Property Management Officer.
Good afternoon, Chair Bozovic, members of the board. As the order stated, the City of Eugene is requesting the transfer of the subject parcel. In addition, there's two other adjoining parcels that were acquired for right-of-way that the city would like to have as well. These parcels were acquired and held at a time, you know, this parcel was acquired in 1966. The other parcels were purchased, I believe, in the 1970s, and they were being held for improvements to Beltline Road. Over the years, the state has done the improvements, and these parcels are no longer needed for county use. The subject parcel, as it was acquired through tax foreclosure, statute requires that you first have a public hearing before it can be transferred to a municipal corporation. There's also stipulation that when you do such a transfer, that it has to be used for a public purpose for at least 20 years. And usually, we also note that in the deed, that it's been transferred for a public purpose, and it must be used for a public purpose for 20 years. The city's going to use them for parks and open space. The subject parcel, the one through foreclosure, was acquired through, I'm sorry, excuse me, was designated as wetland, so you couldn't build on it. I've been working with the right-of-way managers, and, you know, they've negotiated a price for the whole three parcels. And as I say, this one requires a public hearing and the board's approval before it can be transferred.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Turk? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. And do you know, can you check to see if anyone's signed up? No one's signed up for the public hearing? So seeing no one's signed up, and there's no one, is there anyone in the room that wishes to address the board on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to discussion by the board and a possible motion. Mr. Lichen.
I don't have any other questions for the discussion. I just want to say thanks, Jeff, for the presentation. Obviously, it was a very good one. And so I'd like to move approval on order 15-08-18-14, the matter of authorizing this transfer of surplus county-owned real property identified as assessors map number 17-04-28-11-03000 to the City of Eugene for public purposes.
Second. It's been moved in second. A discussion to the motion. Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4O with Commissioner Farr excused.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that drops us back in our agenda to where I left off before lunch here, with agenda team requests and work session requests. And I want to just confirm, there was discussion under the resource management plan comments to have a separate letter sent to the governor. And I want to make sure that we got three head nods for that. I saw myself and Commissioner Stewart, but now I'm confirming that we have Commissioner Lichen, so that will be an item that the board has asked staff to prepare. And are there any other additional agenda team requests or work session requests? So I, while we were meeting this morning, I got a request from Chief Terry Nye of the Lane Fire Authority. And I don't know if you all are aware that the Lane Fire Authority, South Lane Fire District, and many others have issued restrictions on certain activities due to the extreme fire weather over the next couple of days. And his request was whether or not the county could do that for areas not covered by the districts, and what, whether or not that same order could even extend to the areas between the Eugene-Springfield city limits or urban growth boundaries and the extent to some of these districts. There's really great concern about being consistent throughout the county with the bans on open fire, boeing, et cetera, over the next couple of days. I don't even know if we have that authority at this point, and we'd have to do it as an emergency order at this point. I did send that, those requests on to legal counsel, and I copied the administrator. But I was wondering if I could just maybe confirm three head nods to have them look at that, and if we do need to do something in a hurry, it may have to be as an emergency board meeting. Commissioner Sorenson.
Yes, I think we should do two things. One is try to get information from legal counsel and Ms. Cook and emergency management on our authority to do it. And the second thing I think we should do is get our schedules to, and contact infotum is Jones, so that we can do, kind of speed that process up.
Yeah, because we are in the red flag situation right now. Commissioner Stewart.
Seems to be a little time sensitive. Does this matter that we could just recess for an hour and research and come back with the results? Because, I mean, I guess we could have an emergency meeting tomorrow, but only calling for the danger, I think, for the next three days.
Yeah, I was hoping we could make the order match whatever the current orders are from some of the fire districts. If they lift their ban, we'd lift ours.
Yeah, I would endorse my idea and Faye's idea.
Okay. So it sounds like that, Commissioner Lichen?
No, I would agree. And I think it'd be, I think having legal counsel research this, because I'd be curious to see where the intergovernmental agreements are in place with the, it's now Eugene Springfield Fire and Life Safety. How far out in the, beyond the urban growth boundary they would go. I, because I, no, I'm in total agreement. I think something needs to be done, and as quick as possible. I would agree.
If you look at, I think it's item we did this morning. It includes a map of the fire districts. It's item, it's the first one on legal counsel. Kind of shows the districts, and there's quite a, I mean, there's lots of areas specifically up Colcrick and Drina and that that don't have fire protection.
It's sort of the gap, I think in those areas, it's pretty, I think we have some clear, more clear authority than the gaps between the districts and the City of Eugene and Springfield, where they actually have the firefighting contract. So it'll be interesting to see what legal counsel has to say on those issues. I tried to contact Mr. Dingle before we reconvene this afternoon, and also sent a text, and I have not heard back from him, if he's even available. And I imagine that's probably what Mr. Mokrheyski is trying to check on, is whether or not we can, whether an hour is enough time, or this is something that's going to take more time than that. Do we have any sense, if we were to recess for an hour, whether that would be enough time to get at least an answer, or we may just come back into session to adjourn?
Yeah, Mr. Dingle is on his way, so you could do one of two things. You could break, you know, recess, and we can determine how long it will take, or you can wait a couple of minutes and see if he has an immediate answer, and then break. I think certainly if you're going to take action on an order today, then we're going to need to take a break to put that together.
So maybe, yeah, why don't we?
Recession.
Recession, and we'll, I will say that we're going to reconvene at 2:30 at the soonest, so that the board members know that they've got at least till 2:30 to get back. I will notify you if we have to delay that, waiting for legal counsel, or we'll reconvene shortly, briefly, just to update you on the process.
Even though this is not an emergency board meeting, maybe we could have Ms. Jones try to reach Commissioner Farr for 2:30.
That may be a good idea. I'll see if we can do that at the same time. So what I'd like to do, as Mr. Dingle walks in the door, is 40, is 50 minutes enough time to at least get a brief answer from legal counsel on our authority?
Yeah, I think I can, I think I can give you the, I mean, I think I can give you the tentative answer right now, which is that you could pass a board order today that wouldn't be enforceable. I mean, it wouldn't have any thing. You could do an ordinance, but it would take 13, you know, you'd have to at least do the one reading. I could do some more research, but that's my quick response.
That a board order wouldn't, an emergency action, a board order wouldn't have the force of law as far as the fire?
Yeah, I don't know what you would be doing to people. I mean, that's part of it, is what would you be seeking to do to people who violate it?
Is there, is the, there's a section of ORS that Chief Nye cites when he gave his order making those bans? Is that, is that the, is it similar authority, or is that just for fire districts?
If you give me the section, I'll check, but I'm almost certain it's just for fire districts. But I'll check that.
Okay. Then how long do you need to check into that?
If you give me that ORS, I can probably, I can definitely do it within 50 minutes.
Okay, I think I forwarded you the email that contains that. Okay, I did forward that to you, so you do have that. Then maybe we can reconvene at about 2 o'clock, just to get that determination, and then if we, if it determined that we do have the authority and need to draft an order, we'll have to probably recess again.
I might suggest that we get the phone in the conference room.
And reconvene up in Board of Commissioners.
Easier.
Yeah, conference room. Okay, so what I'm going to, but then what I'm going to do is I'm going to recess us until 2 o'clock, and we'll reconvene in the Board of Commissioners' conference room, specifically on this particular issue, to find out if we do have authority. If we do have authority, we'll probably have to recess again while legal counsel drafts an order. So we are recessed until 2 o'clock, and we'll reconvene in the Board of Commissioners' conference room. So I'd like to reconvene to the regular session of the Board of Commissioners. We're in the Board of Commissioners' conference room. Today is Tuesday, August 18th, 2015, and we wanted a possible emergency action item relative to doing some prohibitive activities relative to the fire danger in unprotected areas of the county. And we were waiting on legal counsel to come in and advise us of our authorities relative to that. But if there's any discussion or catch-up with the board on this point at this time, I have, I have the ORS that was referred to in Chief Nye's order, and it does not refer to counties. It refers to districts and fire chiefs, you know, can prescribe conditions upon which permission is granted, or even, you know, prevent stuff from, in this section of the ORS. So I'll be interested to hear what counsel says. I'm not finding a section that talks about unprotected areas outside of districts. Anything you'd like to add, Commissioner?
Is it possible we could pass something that says, "To the extent of our power, we," we don't know, it's sort of like a quitclaim deed. You know, you don't exactly know what your rights are, but you're going to convey the rights that you think you have. Can we do something like that?
That might be possible, because I was also hoping to tie the order to having it pinned upon when the fire chiefs send their provision, so we don't have to come back and need to withdraw the order, or just, you know, the time period to be until such time that the bans lifted by, by the fire chiefs for their districts. So what I, what I believe that Chief Nye would like to see is a uniform set of rules across the entire county.
Yeah.
And right now, there's some gaps between, you know, some rural areas that are residential that are not under the forest authority, or that aren't under a fire district's authority. And then there's an issue about between the districts and whether the City of Eugene and Springfield have similar restrictions.
Could you give us your view of what the current restrictions are in place on various city and forest and park lands, just to kind of update us with what we know about the restrictions?
Yeah, Chief Nye issued a, an email out and promulgated it several ways yesterday. Even on Facebook, I saw this, the effect of it at 12:01 a.m. today. He was going to, in accordance with ORS 478-960, order the following restriction, all lands protected by Lane Fire Authority and within the legal boundaries of Lane County Fire District, wanted lane, rural fire rescue. And it basically is no open flames allowed outdoors, including campfires, warming fires, ceremonial, cooking fires and ceremonial fires. But the only thing allowed is gas-powered barbecues are allowed, but they're restricted to hard, non-flammable surfaces. In addition, there's no power equipment such as lawn mowers, or chainsaws, stump grinders, et cetera, may be operated on or near dry grass, brush, or trees at any time, except that mowing of green irrigated lawns is allowed. And then no smoking outside of buildings or vehicles in any area with dry grass, brush, or trees. No operation of welding or metal-cutting equipment outdoors in any area with dry grass, brush, or trees. All outdoor logging operations, power, you know, that includes, you know, tractors and skidders and fellers and whatever else. And all construction operations involving dozers or graders are restricted to streets or roads, developed building sites or other areas with non-flammable surfaces. And all other, any other spark emitting operation not specifically mentioned is prohibited outdoors. So basically, it's restricting almost any sort of ignition source from being operated in areas of dry brush or grass or forest lands, is what Chief Nye's order does for his, the districts he has authority directly over. And I understand that almost an exact duplicate order was issued for almost every fire district in the county. South Lane Fire District, Dexter, and a few others have all issued that same order. So the question is, is do we have that authority or not? And now counsel's walking in, because apparently, Lane Fire Authority, Goshen, Pleasant Hill, Dexter, and South Lane all issued the same order.
I just want to see about that.
So counsel is here now to advise us. I looked at the ORS, it specifically talks about districts and fire chiefs, not counties, but doesn't mention what to do in unsecured areas. So.
My read is that it's, the only way you could do, do it in an enforceable way would be to pass an ordinance, an emergency ordinance. They get to do it because the legislature has granted those districts that authority. They can just issue those proclamations. The other one that's cited by, the 478 one, is a special authority that's granted to lands within a certain district, close to the Cascades and within that, that district. The state forester has that authority. So what I would, so it sounds like everyone's done, or it sounds like the districts have done what I was just talking to Mr. Mokrheyski about, is I suspect that the other ones have all issued the same thing, because they all have the same authority.
Yeah.
Is that what they've done?
Yeah, basically, exact same order.
And the city fire departments could do it too. So I mean, the City of Eugene and the City of Springfield could do the same thing. They could say no.
So you can just sit with this a little more volume, please, sorry.
Oh, sorry. The fire departments have the same authority. They could do, the city, you know, the city fire departments could issue the same kind of order. I suspect they don't, because it's not quite the same issue inside the city, but.
The Department of Forestry, we had Mr. Decker issued the same thing for all the forestry, forest lands protected under the Department of Forestry. So in essence, that actually covers a lot of the area that is unincorporated, and so that may actually affect.
If you looked at that, if we had the board order from this morning, the very first one, that's what I was just going to say, there's a very teeny-tiny part of that area, really small areas that are not covered by the forest. You know what I mean? That are the unincorporated pieces.
Yeah, I'm thinking with that, with all the fire districts and the state issuing that, probably the West Lane District has issued the same, same restriction.
So it's like 90, well, I can't remember what Linda told me, but it's like, that's like 90-some percent of the unincorporated area, except for those little teeny pieces.
So, and the only way we could do that, you say, is under the emergency ordinance. Does that still have the 13-day for second meeting?
Well, you could do it after, I believe, I was just looking that up. I think you could actually do that after you're on, but it would be, it would be a minimum of 13 days. I mean, that's the quickest you could get it done.
Which is beyond the emergency we're sitting in right now. So is it possible that our Public Information Officer maybe make a statement, come with Kelly, the guy out in the media?
And what I was, what I was going to suggest was contacting, was using as the vehicle for that, Ms. Cook, as our emergency operations manager.
Yeah, on Facebook and everything, just get it out on all of the areas that we can, just to urge people to follow those restrictions.
That's my suggestion, too.
You know, one thing I would just maybe suggest, that we're not always able to have the weight of the board, because the board hasn't always taken action. We have the board here now, and so I wonder if actually, I think the best would be if we were able to put out a statement that says, "The Board of Commissioners encourages, you know, all residents to comply with fire restrictions that have been put in place in other locations, including restricted mowing and all those things."
And I would, we can incorporate those.
So we can do, I mean, we can, we could put out a statement, and I could put out a statement, but it has a different impact, I think, when it comes from the elected leaders.
We could also have a resolution, you know, approving of the actions of all these fire officials and city officials and, and district officials, and urge the public to comply with them.
If that sort of raises the profile, I think more people will sit up and take notice, if there are.
That's an excellent idea. So I could draft up a, we could just draft up a resolution that would incorporate those, you know, the restrictions that are in that one email that said, and say that the Board of Commissioners strongly are doing.
We could put out a statement today.
Yeah, and we could even do, I'm sure Linda would, you know, and then she could say that as the emergency operations manager, she strongly supports this resolution by the board.
So do we need to recess again to draft that resolution, or do you think we can just pass a motion directing you to promulgate the board's desire that folks follow the restrictions as outlined in Chief Nye's order?
I think that I personally am comfortable with that that's enough specificity, if the board is. That's, I get very clearly what you want to do, which is the board. That's, I get very clearly what you want to do, which is the Board, you know, will put in, you know, where is it, strive, where is, you know, some of those things. And then it's, the Board strongly, unanimously strongly urges that residents comply with the restrictions set out below as issued by other districts in the area. And then it'll just incorporate those.
Into a resolution?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't the Board have to take action on the resolution, though?
Yeah, I think it would just be a statement. Or ask you to issue a statement, not a resolution.
A statement, okay. So you could, you could do a motion to do a, just to.
Draft a statement. Directing the administrator and counsel to draft a statement of the Board's desire for all county residents to obey the restrictions. And then you could use the restrictions. Oh, Pat, sorry, Pat.
You think, sorry, Pat.
You're gone.
I don't think you could hear him.
But to obey the restrictions that are in, you know, similar, and you could just.
When I just do the.
Yeah. And he has, you know, he has pretty good language even in his order where it first references the Oregon Department of Forestry's going to the industrial IFPL forest.
Level four, exactly.
And due to current fire conditions, to bring the entire district in the same precaution level, you know, with us it'd be to bring the entire county into the same precaution levels. We, you know, strongly urge our residents to follow the following restrictions. And then you could list the no open flames, blah, 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 that is actually Curtis letter. I think that, you know, if you guys could, a motion asking staff to put together that a statement that follows those guidelines, I think would be enough to let you guys do that. And it'd be a board motion, the entire Board.
Might as well. I was going to say, Commissioner Farr would be great.
Yeah.
Five commissions.
Yeah. If somebody has his number to re-dial, I just don't have any.
Where is that?
And whether or not he's traveling.
It might be easier.
His cell phone number.
Calling his cell phone.
Yeah.
Is he traveling?
Yeah, I think he's.
He was in the Bay Area, wasn't he?
Yes, somewhere.
He says he has been serviced, but.
Were you calling his cell phone?
Yeah.
517-512.
Yes, terrible, so I'm not sure. Yeah.
Who are you calling? Does somebody want to check that motion?
I was going to write it down just to sort of give it someone to read, too.
Okay.
Hi, this is Pat Farr. Sorry that I missed your call. This is like your phone number. I'll try to get back to you.
Try one more time.
And I apologize to the audience of this organization, but this is an emergency.
Hi, this is Pat Farr. Sorry that I missed your call.
All right, we're going to do it without Pat.
Okay. Texting him right now, sorry.
And the legal counsel is quickly scribbling.
Well, and I think, you know, we've all seen our brethren in Grant County right now, what they're going through and how devastating this is. And I mean, we're talking about homes, structures that have been destroyed in Grant County right now. And I just. I just heard on the radio that John Day and Canyonville are on, the towns are on evacuating, which is of a moment. Exactly. And just really, it's just stunning.
Well, that's, you know, part of the reason for this extraordinary level of precaution that the fire chiefs have put out and the Oregon Department of Forestry is because all of their resources are committed. In fact, you know, one of the things I got was an update on the Chambers Mill Fire south of Lorraine. They're in mop-up mode trying to get the boundary, they've got 100% containment, and they're trying to get the boundary wider, you know, wet boundary wider around the whole fire. The crews that are on that doing mop-up are their on-call crews for initial attack right now. That is all that is remaining in Lane County really for initial attack of the wildfire is crews that are already trying to deal with the wildfire. So, you know, the level of stress of the system of firefighting and fire prevention in Oregon right now is at such an extreme that one more fire is going to be the straw that broke the camel's back. And we don't want that to be in Lane County in particular. And that's one of the reasons why we're looking at trying to help the fire districts and the Department of Forestry with making these fire restrictions uniform and across the entire county. So do you have your.
I think I have a motion.
Draft.
Chair, just let me read this.
Sure.
I would say that the motion would be, a motion to have staff draft a letter to be released to the Lane County Public Information Officer and Emergency Management Officer, strongly urging all residents to comply with the Oregon Department of Forestry Industrial Fire Precaution Order Level Four. And then I would list out the one through, the restrictions one through seven, the specific ones that are listed on that back page, so that there, and that would be, so that there would be consistent restrictions on fire throughout all areas of the county.
So moved?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion of the motion.
Just one quick discussion, and that is, I think the importance is, if my memory serves me correct, I believe they figured out the, what started the Stout's Fire was a mower.
Yeah.
And so there is a perfect example, just a simple mower igniting a devastating fire. So this is a very good. Thank you for your speaking, okay?
Do you have Commissioner Farr?
Yeah, so we have Commissioner Farr. Commissioner Farr, there's a motion on the table right now that's been seconded to authorize staff to draft a statement asking all residents of Lane County to obey the restrictions that have been promulgated by the Oregon Department of Forestry and the fire chiefs, and authorizing our public information officer and our emergency manager to get those out to the public. So that's the motion that's on board right now. And just missed Commissioner Liken noting to folks that it was a lawnmower that started the Stout's Creek Fire that were up past $30 million fighting. So.
So did he, and what might have this, this resolution in favor of having a vote against instead of having an order, that's going to be a, that's not both the order with, even more expeditious way of addressing a, a motion.
Yeah, the only thing we can do is an emergency ordinance under our current authority. So, and that will take, that takes several days to put into place. And by that time, we're going to be past the heat wave and the period of great concern. So this will basically just, it won't have any enforceable penalties along with it, but it is a statement from the entire Board asking all county residents to obey these restrictions.
Okay. Yes, I understand. Thank you.
So is there any other discussion to the motion? Commissioner Sorenson?
Do you think, Steve, do you think we should, what are the merits, pros and cons of following this up with a direction to start the process for an ordinance? Because I doubt if the fire season is going to end in 13 or 20 or 21 days.
It's so funny because what I was just thinking, Commissioner Sorenson, was in addition to our group of orders that we get, we might think about doing an ordinance where this, where essentially you would agree, that you would agree to adopt whenever the, you know, whatever source you pick, whether it's the forester, whoever imposes restrictions above level two, that you have the ability to impose it, you know, that they're imposed this way. Do you know what I mean? It would, you'd do it prospectively, essentially.
Yeah.
It would become sort of automatic. You would, you would essentially tag along with those. When those restrictions were ordered and imposed by the forester, they would become your ordinance.
Yeah. Or the fire chief.
Or the fire chief, whichever body you picked.
Yeah. And we'd even look to.
It should be, that way we could solve this problem. You would never be behind the curve. You would just be tagging along with that.
Yeah. And I believe, isn't there a single fire chief for the entire county that's selected from the fire chiefs?
I believe so, yeah. That leads the effort. I believe it's, isn't it the chief of the COBRA gets to have.
Yeah. What I do is, I'm a chief minister, you know, so that there's actually a position we could refer to if we chose the fire chief versus, ODF has a different set of standards about, concerned about with forestry prevention, IP, you know, industrial fire protection level is one thing. It's when we get a fire district that decides that they need to actually limit private, you know, outside of the forest activities. And that's what we have in this case, is where we've got fire chiefs saying, "We need to limit people from even mowing their pastures or, you know, getting out, getting out in a dry field with a wood chipper or whatever." That's what this, you know, so.
I would work with, I would work with Ms. Cook to find out whatever that authority is, because I know she.
I do, I think, I will work with Commissioner Sorenson, and maybe we'll just, we'll confirm that as a three-head nod, a direction to staff for future agenda items, to look at an ordinance that will make this a little bit more automatic in the future and have, maybe even have some weight of violating county code.
And what we could do, Commissioner, we could add it to that group of board orders that you review every January.
Yeah. So I'll look to, it looks like we have three-head nods for that, so if you want to add that to your future agenda item list. Yeah, four, thank you. Yeah, four or five, it seems like, we got more than three. That's what I wanted to make sure of before we direct staff. So back to the original motion before the Board about the statement urging residents to obey these restrictions. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Commissioner Stewart?
Well, I appreciate having this conversation because I was very worried about the situation that we're in right now when the Department of Forestry says that they don't have any crews to deploy on a local fire or helicopters or support equipment. Case in point, a week ago, when we had one of the fires on territorial, there was four that day. One of the fires was out Gaudie there, and it was headed towards Cotty's Grove. And you can't help but wonder if it wasn't for the, I believe, two helicopters and four planes that were dropping retardant and five bulldozers, you know, where would that have, if I had stopped, would it have made it to Cotty's Grove? So those are real concerns, and I appreciate staff. I know we've had a lot of concerns with citizens with some of our activities, and I appreciate staff kind of taking the same approach here, stopping some of our activities because whether we realize it or not, people look to us and when they see us doing things, and that gives them the implied impression that, oh, well, Lane County's mowing the grass, so therefore I can go home and mow the grass. They may not understand that we have trained individuals in water and different things on board meeting requirements. So I just appreciate everybody that's been involved in understanding how important this is.
I just mentioned that the Oregon Department of Forestry has an interactive map showing where these fires are, and it's pretty impressive.
It's very interactive.
So you can, you can see just how close these fires are getting.
Yep.
And, you know, of course, the famous one right now is this Canyon Creek complex fire outside of John Day. It's pretty serious.
It's the, I heard on the radio, it is the number one fire priority in the United States.
Wow.
Yeah. And there's one in the state of Washington.
And there's one in Idaho.
Idaho.
And there's one in Northern California. So there's a reason why resources are stretched, then, and you're starting to call on National Guard who are untrained normally to fight fires. So you have to first train them and then put them on the line. So any further discussion for the motion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 That is a unanimous 5-0 vote, and thank you, Commissioner Farr, for joining us again for that vote.
Thank you for dominating our call.
All right, and I think that gets us through our entire agenda today. Is there any other business for the Board? Then I am going to adjourn the Board, and we'll see you next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.